Good evening, everyone. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of May 16th, 2024 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Nellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. Statement of complaint setting forth date, time, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. I would ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Dr. Toback.
This is a wonderful evening. It's a wonderful opportunity for board members and residents to learn more about two very important programs, our highly successful music program and our recently created Unified Sports Program. We'll be recognizing many of our students and staff members, including our student representatives, who are here for their last meeting of this school year. We'll also be recognizing our outgoing PTO presidents, who do so much to support our schools. So, to get started with our recognition program, May 12th to 18th is Special Education Week in New Jersey. It's truly heartening to see the dedication and commitment of the Wayne community in recognizing and celebrating Special Education Week. The participation in events like the Lincoln Tunnel Challenge 5K and the Wayne team's involvement in Unified Sports demonstrates a collective effort to promote inclusion and support for individuals with disabilities. The ongoing support for Wayne Unified Sports Programs, such as the Turkey Trot, further emphasizes the importance of providing opportunities for students of all abilities to participate in sports and recreational activities together. Creating safe and supportive spaces like CPAG and WSPA meetings and the gathering spot for preschool families is invaluable in fostering connections, sharing information, and building a sense of community among parents and caregivers of children with special needs. We look forward to growing the gathering spot for more parents across the district as we continue to raise awareness, highlight achievements, and provide inclusive activities, and engage with the community, and offer professional development opportunities, which are all essential components in creating a culture of inclusion and support for individuals with disabilities. By coming together as a community to celebrate Special Education Week and continuing these efforts throughout the year, Wayne is truly making a difference in ensuring that every student has the opportunity to thrive and reach their full potential. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to move on to the part of the program about our outgoing PTO presidents. So, I'm going to just speak very quickly about them. They're not here this evening, but they've received awards already, they've received recognition, but it makes sense to certainly mention them very quickly. So, as valued members of our community, you have helped to make a difference by giving your considerable time and talents to our schools. I'd like to acknowledge their outstanding contributions. While all of our PTO presidents at some point served for many years as just members of the PTO, not officers, leading up to their service as president, they have spent years and years tirelessly in support of our schools. So, our outgoing PTO presidents are Debbie Casio from James Fallon Elementary School, Jen -- oop, yep, round of applause. Jen Crawford from Skylar Colfax Middle School. Julia Hiljardadia from Pines Lake Elementary. Lauren Jean from Preakness Early Childhood Center. Lori Polfrante from Skylar Colfax Middle School. And Kim Rydel from James Fallon Elementary. Okay, so at this point, we're going to go on to recognizing our outgoing student representatives. So, first of all, Ava Ruick, would you please come forward? So, Ava will be attending Seton Hall University in the fall, and she'll be majoring in criminology. Ava was the SDA president, the senior class president, the student ambassador president, a member of the National Arts Society, and the Spanish Arts Society. She maintained a 4.0 grade point average, was a member of the cheerleading team, organized the student-run morning announcements, and organized the school-wide spirit rally to aid needy community members and local charities. So, certainly, they'll miss you at Wayne Hills High School, but we'll certainly miss you here, Ava. Congratulations. Okay? So, being a student representative is a unique thing, because in the end, you get to see the adult world of school governance, of Board of Education activities, you get to see the community come to board meetings and express concerns. And so, I've always felt it is an incredibly valuable learning experience, but what I like to do is, at the end of their term of service, I like to ask all of our student representatives, first of all, if they've learned anything by being on the board, because that's always a good question, but secondly, would you ever consider being a Board of Education member or a superintendent? Right? So, why don't you say a few words about that?
Sure. Thank you so much, and thank you for the recognition. It was interesting to witness democracy firsthand. I got to witness it every month, once every month, and I think a lot of students would benefit from these meetings, seeing exactly what a government is like. I don't believe that I would have had any real-life experience in government without having sat here and listened in every month. There is so much time and effort that goes into making our school system and town run smoothly, which a lot of people tend to not realize. Thank you for allowing me to sit in on these meetings and represent my school. And as to whether I would be interested in serving as a board member in the future, my future plans do consist of going to Seton Hall, then law school, and becoming a lawyer, but I could honestly see myself serving as a board member in the future. I've taken on many leadership roles in my school career, and I would love to continue to be a leader in the future. However, I do realize how much hard work and patience this job requires. I will also say I did enjoy the fame as well. My friends would always send me little screenshots of me on the live streams, so I did appreciate that as well. Thank you so much for your time.
So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Katherine McGee from Wayne Valley. So, Katherine will be attending Rutgers University this fall, and she's majoring in biochemistry. Katherine's additional accolades are High Honor Roll, National Honor Society, National Art Honor Society, and Model UN Fellowship Award for Excellent Collaboration and Mediation. So, Ava, like I said, I'm sorry, Katherine, as I said, I think that certainly the people at Wayne Valley will miss you, but we'll certainly miss you here at the Board of Education. So, thank you for serving the student body, and thank you for helping the Board of Ed. So, Katherine, same questions to you. Did you learn? What did you learn? Tell us a little bit about your experience here with the Board of Ed over the past few months, and tell us whether or not you would possibly consider serving as a board member.
Thank you. As a student representative, I've learned that it is always worthwhile to speak up when you have something to say. I've witnessed many moments of strength and demonstrations of effective communication during my time here, and I'll take those memories with me throughout my life. I've learned that being informed is the key to making good decisions, and that it is always possible to listen to others while maintaining your own beliefs. We cannot function as a community without spaces like these where information and opinions are shared in a respectful manner. I'm grateful for the experience this has given me, and I hope future student representatives feel the same excitement that I did before every meeting. And I think I would be interested in serving as a board member. It's important to always be involved in your community, no matter in what capacity, and this is the perfect place to do it. The future of our town starts with the education our young people receive, and it would be an honor to be a part of the decision-making process that affects that education. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Okay, so now, on to the next part of our program, music recognition. So, the music recognition program is an annual highlight of the Board of Education. The Board has for many years taken the time to recognize student achievement in our instrumental and vocal music programs, and as you will hear, the arts are alive and well in the Wayne Township public schools. Congratulations to all of our students, our music teachers, specifically Mr. Paterno, Mr. Ruska, Ms. Pascal, Ms. Miller, Ms. Palomba, Mr. DeWilde, Mr. Puzak, Mr. Basalacato, Ms. Medley, and Russo Nialo, and Mr. Vigletti, and Mr. Vogel, most of which are -- those staff members are here tonight. Raise your hand if you're here. So, at this time, I'd like to turn things over to Mr. Paterno, man who needs no introduction.
Good evening. My name's Matt Paterno, and I have the honor of being the elder statesman of the Wayne Township Music Department. Thank you to our school administrators, our Board of Education, and the Wayne community for taking time tonight to honor the achievements of our outstanding music students. We know this is a very busy time of year for you and appreciate the respect you are showing to our students and our music programs. Our schools love to foster an atmosphere of individual achievement, group dynamics, and team success. Tonight is a wonderful opportunity to recognize all of those attributes viewed through the lens of our Wayne Township Music Department. We especially would like to highlight our student accomplishments and their level of dedication and persistence necessary to earn these honors. These students have brought a sense of pride to themselves, our music department, our schools, and our community by representing the Wayne Township school system statewide. A special thank you to Noria Curie, who was instrumental, pardon the pun, in organizing tonight and helping our students prepare their certificates. But before we begin the student honors, we are very proud to present a short performance by two of our honorees, Juliana Steer, oboe from Wayne Hills, and Daniel Cho, clarinet from Wayne Valley. They will be presenting several movements of diverse shades of green sleeves by Anthony Thank you. Good evening, everybody. On behalf of myself, my colleague Krista Wilde, and Principal Courtney Doohan from Anthony Wayne Middle School, we'd like to recognize the following students: Mason Carter, trumpet, North Jersey Junior Area Symphonic Band.
You've got to come all the way around. Sorry. Look at Ferris. So, you should get a picture.
I'll stand on my tippy toes. Come here.
Wait, get a picture. He's great at pictures.
Sorry. Pranil Kumar, alto saxophone, North Jersey Junior Area Symphonic Band.
Yeah, Pranil.
And Amber Nguyen, clarinet, North Jersey Junior Area Symphonic Band. Also, on behalf of our corps director, Ms. Lisa Rousenell, who could not be here tonight, we'd like to recognize our outstanding vocalist, Kylie Ortiz, North Jersey Intermediate Treble Chorus Soprano I. Unfortunately, Kylie was not able to be here tonight. I'd like to now turn the podium over to Mr. Nick Vigillet from George Washington Middle School.
Good evening and welcome. Before I read the names from George Washington Middle School, I just would like to circle back to what Matt Paterno was saying about our elementary program. Most of the honors ensembles that students are going to -- are recognized for tonight become eligible once they're in seventh grade. About 11 years ago, our North Jersey School Music Association created an opportunity for our fifth and sixth graders to also experience a regional-level ensemble opportunity. And so, this past Saturday on May 4th, an event that provided band students in grades five and six the opportunity to participate in this region ensemble. One fifth-grade band and two sixth-grade bands came together and were formed. They were comprised of over 300 elementary school students. Again, it was a one-day event. The students rehearsed in the morning, they had a sectional in the afternoon, they rehearsed a little bit again in the afternoon, and then they performed a concert that day. This is, you know, again, a wonderful opportunity for students to, especially at that age and level, to see that there are other students out there like them doing what they're doing, and especially at a high level already. So, this year, and because it was only two weeks ago, we kind of missed the deadline to turn it into the program here, so I'm going a little off-script, but we'd like to recognize and at least say their names, because I believe it's important, because, again, they are the foundation for everything that you're going to hear tonight. So, Mrs. Christina Batiz sponsored five students this year who participated in the fifth-grade band, and they were Casey Alea from Tunas Dye School, Malik Corkmaz from Tunas Dye, Chloe Harrison, also from Tunas Dye, Anita Boonfodung from James Fallon, and Matthew Boonfodung from James Fallon also. All right, we're going to move on. For George Washington Middle School, we have several students we'd like to recognize tonight. So, first, Anna Bugai, flute with the Ridgewood Symphony Orchestra Festival wins, and the North Jersey Region One Elementary Honor Band. Christopher Capaludi, alto saxophone, Ridgewood Symphony Orchestra Festival wins. Peter Friar, flute, Ridgewood Symphony Orchestra Festival wins. Cassandra Papadatos, piano, first prize at the New York International Music Concourse Competition for the last three years. Cassandra's also received special commendation from the Senate and Congress, and was invited to perform at Carnegie Hall yearly for her wins at the highest state and national level. Angela Prusakos, tenor saxophone, Ridgewood Symphony Orchestra Festival wins. Savannah Rex, clarinet, North Jersey Region One Elementary Honor Band. Ellen Se, clarinet, Ridgewood Symphony Orchestra Festival wins. Ellen Se, clarinet, Ridgewood Symphony Orchestra Festival wins. And Stephen Sun, oboe, Ridgewood Symphony Orchestra Festival wins. I also would like to go off-script one more time, because just last Friday, I would like to recognize the ensembles from George Washington Middle School for both choir and band. And again, obviously, way past the deadline to turn it into the program here, but they do deserve recognition. And I'll start with, on behalf of Mrs. Medley, our chorus teacher, recognize the sixth-grade -- we went to -- the band chorus went to Dorney Park for their Music in the Parks competition, and it was a very sunny musical performance on a very rainy Friday afternoon. But sixth-grade elementary treble choir came in first place with a highest rating of superior. Her seventh-grade mixed choir came in first place with a highest rating of superior. Her eighth-grade mixed choir also first place with a rating of superior. Her Eagleettes Women's Choir first place with a rating of superior. Our sixth-grade elementary concert band came in first place with a rating of superior. Our seventh and eighth-grade concert band first place with a rating of superior. Our jazz ensemble first place with a rating of excellent. Additionally, GW received two overall ensemble awards. The Eagleettes received the Best Overall Middle School Choir Award. And seventh and eighth-grade band received the Best Overall Middle School Concert Band And finally, special recognition goes to one of our sixth-grade students, Ava Scavone, who received an individual award for Best Overall Elementary School Vocal Soloist. So, congratulations. Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to turn the program over to Dennis Puzak from Skylar Colfax.
On behalf of myself, Mr. Vogel, Mrs. Palomba, and Mrs. Weinstein, it's my pleasure to introduce our Skylar Colfax Awards recipients. The first award goes to Max Bonai, trombone, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band. Second on French horn, Emily Erwin, French horn, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band. Next, Molly Klisch, alto saxophone, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band. Next, Molly Klisch, alto saxophone, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band. On behalf of myself, Mr. Vogel, Mrs. Palomba, and Mrs. Weinstein, it's my pleasure to introduce our Skylar Colfax Awards recipients. The first award goes to Max Bonai, trombone, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band. Next, Molly Klisch, alto saxophone, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band. Tia Musole, clarinet, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band. Kiran Shrapada, clarinet, North Jersey Area Honors Band.
Good evening. On behalf of our choir director, Mrs. Palumba, I'd like to introduce Kayla Saturko, North Annabelle Muniz, North Jersey Intermediate Regional Mixed Choir Soprano 2. And lastly, Camilla Vaccaro, North Jersey Intermediate Regional Trouble Choir Alto.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. A huge round of applause for our Skylar Colfax Awards recipients. It is now my pleasure to introduce Mr. Christopher Ruska, Wayne Valley High School Band Director.
Dennis, you're tall, man. On behalf of myself, our Associate Director of Bands, Mackenzie Miller, and our Principal, Mr. Ken Balzuski, I'd like to announce the next few students from Wayne Valley High School. Daniel Cho, who auditioned and was anointed into the New York Youth Symphony Orchestra. Daniel?
Thank you. Our next recipient is Roberto Cisneros. He auditioned and got into the Jazz House Kids, which is a jazz program throughout the state area, and they performed on things such as the Kelly Clarkson Show, traveled to New Orleans for a Jazz Education Network conference, and tied for first place in the Mingus Big Band Competition.
Parents get to take pictures, too. It's a parent right to take pictures. And all kids just have to deal with it.
And Ayla Homsey. She is a clarinet player in the Caldwell University Honors Band, and on piano earned second place at the Elite International Music Competition, and performed piano at Carnegie Hall on February 27th at the winner's recital. And she'll be performing at the upcoming Opera America's National Opera Center. And now, Ms. Miller is going to announce on behalf of Ms. Russiello, the members of the Wayne Valley Chorus.
Our first recipient is Aiden Alcalde, North Jersey Region Mixed Chorus Base 1. Our next recipient, Adriana Sercon, North Jersey Region Trouble Chorus Soprano 1. And lastly, Mia Marquez, North Jersey Region Trouble Chorus Soprano 1.
Also, some ensemble work at Wayne Valley High School succeeded this year. Our Wayne Valley High School Marching Band, we were the A-Class State Champion in the New Jersey Marching Band Director Association. We also won Best Overall Music and Best Overall Visual out of 12 bands. And at Nationals, we went to MetLife Stadium and finished in second place, US Bands National Group 1 Open, and we also won Best Music and Best Percussion. And joining me today are some senior members of our leadership team, our drum captain, Luke DePree. We have our senior percussion, George Chimchuris, I got it, phew, I had that written down. Our Jazz Bands scored a silver rating at the NJAGE Festival back in March, and last week on May 2nd, this was after the deadline for awards to be put in, the Jazz Band went to West Milford High School, finished with a gold rating, which is the highest rating you can get. We were only one of two bands that night to get a gold rating. We won overall best saxophone section, and we also took, there's three overall best solos, and we won one of them with Roberto Cisneros, who by the way, will also be entering William Patterson in the summer as a music major for audio engineering and jazz studies. So Roberto, you want to come up with the Jazz Band? And last but not least, we have a TriM Music Honor Society that's directed by Ms. Miller, and they've been doing concerts throughout the entire year at Brightview, the assisted living facility, and the, president or vice? President of TriM, Ayla Homsey. And now, I'm going to turn it over to our emcee and the Director of Bands at Wayne Hills, Mr. Matt Paterno.
Wait, someone stole my notes. Thank you very much. On behalf of our Principal, Mr. Rurik, our Assistant Principal, Dr. Ben Glass, and our Associate Director, Ms. Annie Pascal, we'd like to honor the following students. Adithi Balaji, trumpet player, American Music Abroad Red Tour. Adith unfortunately could not be with us tonight, because I believe he's running for president. Next, Joe Catalano, bass clarinet, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band.
Me? Because I'm very small. Right, okay.
Get my good side. It's almost impossible.
Fresh cut, Ms. Pascal? Nice.
Next is Aaron Han, flute, American Music Abroad Red Tour.
Next is Brandon Huang. Brandon was, earned trombone positions in the North Jersey Area Symphonic Band, and the American Music Abroad Red Tour. Congratulations. Someone took my notes. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Brandon.
Get around. So Mr. Ferris.
Get a little, little smile for your mother.
Your mom goes first. Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Next is Ian Kwan. Ian was a clarinet player in the North Jersey Area Symphonic Band. Thank you, sir. And shake everybody's hand. And then come back for a picture. Come back for a picture. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ian.
Oh wait, okay.
Just some slight redecorating.
Next is Halima Masri, French horn player with the North Jersey Area Band Wind Ensemble. Unfortunately, she could not be here tonight, but we still want to recognize her. Next is Sean Mobius, Barry Sax, Caldwell University Honors Band. Now, interestingly enough, I see that Sean is not here. He is also a town EMT and fireman, and he delivered a baby. I'm not kidding, in the fall, in the back of an ambulance. So congratulations to Sean. Next is Marcus Nieves, bassoon with the Caldwell University Honors Band and the New Jersey Region 1 Symphonic Band. Congratulations to Marcus. Next, Mr. Aaron Schwartz, clarinet, North Jersey Area Band, Symphonic Band. Congratulations.
That's a good handshake. You're going to get hired. You'll get a job wherever you want.
And then your mom. Hold on, wait, wait. The mom's got to get it. And next is Juliana Steer, oboe, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band.
Congratulations, Juliana.
Don't block my nose. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ferris, for taking all the pictures. We appreciate it. Next is Ani Tongatour, alto saxophone, North Jersey Area Symphonic Band, and New Jersey And lastly, but certainly not least, Sadie Valencia, oboe with the Caldwell University Honors Band.
Congratulations, Sadie.
In closing, we'd just like to say these students have brought pride to our community, our schools, themselves, and our programs. But as Dwayne "The Rock" Johnson said, greatness sometimes has to wait. First, there's consistency. Then, there's consistent effort. Then, there's consistent success. Then comes greatness. And I think that when our students learn that, it doesn't matter if they learned it through music or any other activity. The idea of how to achieve greatness will stay with them. Thank you to our Board of Education, our administration, and the rein community for
Thank you, Mr. Paterno, and thank you to all of our students who are here tonight, and also your parents, who obviously were the people who got you started in music and taught you to love music. And also, thank you very much to all of our music teachers who came out tonight to recognize you for all your accomplishments. So at this time, what we'd like to do is move on to a very important part of our program. We're going to talk about our Unified Program. And so, at this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Dana Sur, and Mrs. Jen Verano, and they're going to take you through the program.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Dr. Tobek. Oh, you guys should wait, because it's going to be great. Don't leave, don't leave. Good evening, Board of Education members, Dr. Tobek, Ms. Reichman, students, parents, staffs, and our Wayne School community. As Dr. Tobek mentioned and was shared in our district newsletter, this year, special education is formally recognized this week by the State of New Jersey. We deeply appreciate the consistent support for special education in Wayne, evident through our ongoing alignment with district goals, collaboration with local businesses, which there are hundreds, both in Wayne and local, regular engagement with our Special Education Parent Advisory Group that we call CPAG, and our Wayne Special Parents Association that we called Wayne SPA, provision of professional development for staff, empowering parent training sessions, and the promotion of inclusive activities. Our Wayne community plays an intricate role in nurturing a culture of inclusion support for individuals with disabilities. Tonight, we would like to highlight one of our inclusionary programs through Unified Sports, which epitomizes our commitment which epitomizes our commitment to this noble objective. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Verano, our Assistant Director of Student Support Services, who will share more about our Unified Programs in Wayne.
Good evening. We are excited to be here tonight and share details about Wayne Township's Unified Champion School Program. Unified started in district four years ago, beginning at the high schools. Our middle schools quickly onboarded next, then the elementary schools, and now the Gathering Spa is building momentum at the preschool level. Unified is a social inclusion program where students with and without disabilities come together as leaders to organize and participate in social and sports activities. Sessions are student-led, meaning the students develop their own ideas, then plan and carry through with the assistance and guidance of the advisors. Some examples that are happening now in schools include: At APT, students call themselves the Unifiers and created the Hour of Play. They pick the games for the entire school to engage in. How fun. Lafayette, this year during Unified, the older students come to their sports clubs as mini-coaches. They help ref games and teach the younger students skills like throwing and catching. Anthony Wayne and George Washington came together during Unified Sports and played a competitive game of basketball for a second year in a row. Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley continue to participate in bowling, basketball, track and field, and esports. And now, we'd like to show a short video about the Unified Program so you can all see firsthand our students in action.
We're ready for the Hour of Play. We are- We have planned a super special day for all of you. So excited to be all down in the Hour of Play.
Regarding the street and Central Street, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place. The two quarters to divide this Friday are unfortunately second Friday of the day.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place. The two quarters to divide this Friday are unfortunately second Friday of the day.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we have created a second video that explains the work of the teachers. Please share your class with video and fill out the signature forms assigned to help create a completely wonderful place.
We would like to recognize our amazing staff, dedicated students, and the executive boards of our parent group, CPAG and Wayne SPA.
We would like to call up members of CPAG and Wayne SPA. Ms. Mary Hennessy, I see you there. Ms. Winnie Kivitt, I see you as well. Any other board members, if you'd like to come up? Students who are here today, when you hear your name, if you can please come up to the front. We have, currently, we have over, I would say, 500 students participating in Unified District-wide. So what we're going to do is we have certificates for every single student participating in Unified this year. However, we do have a list of participants that are here today. We're going to, we're going to say your name. And if you hear your name, please come up. That would be great.
And we'll take a picture at the end.
Yes, so then we'll take a group photo. Okay. And if for some reason we accidentally left your name off the list, please just raise your hands and we will definitely include you, okay? Joe DeCarlo. You're going to get a certificate. Okay. So you want to just face the crowd? Wait right here. Perfect. Ryan Lansing. Xavier- Oops. Xavier Marte. Haley Shemley. Kayla Shemley. Grace Hollander. Joshua Passat. Jason Sorato. Alec Willock. Abigail Lapine. Ezekiel Silverio. William Connolly. Alexander J. Leon. Matthew Hennessy. Louis Apicella. Matthew D. Grand Prix. Dylan Capiano. Angelo Romero. Sarah Alcomlich. Perfect. Okay, excellent. Sajin Patel. Zara Jimenski. Sibel Yaman. Zachary Webe. Giancarlo Lombardi. Matthew Palafonte. Madeline Duffy. Allison Magirio. Dylan Santana. Dominic Kramer. Jordan Richard. Liam Goday. Vivian Deuto. Vanessa Amos. Harper Hecht. And Michaela Stokes. Any participants that we may have missed? Really? Okay, all right. Okay. And we have, we do have our advisors. Our advisors, too. Okay. We have Bryn Pierceall. Bryn Pierceall. Bryn. Christina Perante. Kat Correa. Ms. Kat Correa. Ms. Ally Hollander. Ms. Lee. Ms. Skiffigano Tracy Anne. And Ms. Barera. Any advisors? Any advisors that I missed? And any principals that are here, the support of the principals, who could join in on the picture? Thank you, everyone.
All right, let's squeeze.
Maybe we can move this. Behind?
Come on, my friend. Hold on, tiny people, watch out.
And the big people coming back here.
Hello. Does this work? Does this work?
Yeah, you're important. You're VIP, you're VIP here.
Let's get my good side.
Tibbles crying at her house right now, I'm sure.
Oh, thank you. This was great.
I got more. Don't worry.
Thanks, a good job to you. Couldn't do without you guys. Maybe just-
Thank you.
Perfect, well done.
Sorry, we need to take over. We just take over. We're like, yeah.
Someone just say, I think people are leaving. Someone just start saying it or not?
Thank you, advisors. We love you. All right, give me two seconds and wrap it up. I promise. Real quick, every, is this on? Yes. Okay.
No, what do you want it, what do you-
Oh, I was just going to wrap it real quick and just say goodnight and then that's it. Is that right?
I think, I think they're already leaving, though.
That's fine. That's fine. We're good. We're done.
I think you're done. Because everyone left.
I tried, I tried to get your challenger thing on, but we'll have to.
And it's going to be tomorrow.
Yes. Well, yeah, so I wanted to-
...
All right.
All right. Dr. Toback. Your answer.
Just, um, a really quick wrap-up, I have to do the HIB report. So I'm reporting the following data related to HIB in the Wayne Township Public School District. There were fifteen incidents of HIB investigated since my last report, four of those cases were actually HIB cases.
Have our reports from our student reps.
Good evening. The Wayne Valley Jazz Ensemble recently won a gold rating at the West Milford Jazz Festival. Senior Roberto Cisneros was named one of the three best soloists of the entire competition, and Wadid Hanafi received an honorable mention for his trombone solo. The ensemble also won Best Overall Saxophone Section in the competition. Congratulations to these talented musicians. Wayne Valley also had the pleasure of hosting the Chicago Nine Tribute Band on May 4th. Attendees enjoyed an evening of wonderful music and the concert was opened by our very own Wayne Valley Jazz Band. At the end of April, Wayne Valley students and family enjoyed the highly anticipated SDA performances. Congratulations to the white team who won overall, and to White Arrow for first place, White Palm for second place, and to Blue Arrow for third place. Juniors Alex Voigt, Antonio Treza, Andrew Gerda, Ben Borcherd, and Senior Reese Charamonte in the TV2 class directed, filmed, and edited their own short film, which was entered into the Passaic County Film Festival. The movie, titled "The Thief," won first place for Best Short Film. Congratulations to these young filmmakers for their hard work. Gianluca Vittorioso, AP Art Student and Art Honor Society Co-President, recently had his art selected to be part of a virtual exhibition. His mixed media piece called "What's in a Dream?" is a pointillism self-portrait on a black background with a stream of color woven throughout. It will be featured in the First Annual Autism Acceptance Virtual Art Expo. Congratulations to Gianluca for his creativity and art skills. Five Wayne Valley artists were recognized for their work in the Passaic County Teen Arts Festival in the 2D Visual Arts category. And now, all five pieces are advancing to the State Teen Arts Festival. Congratulations to Craig Legra, Gabriela Batelli, Isaiah Rodriguez, who submitted artwork, and to Halla Chura and Anna Marie Rodriguez, who submitted photography. Gabriela Batelli's artwork was also selected to be part of the NJTAF Traveling Exhibit, in which it will travel for an entire year to showcase the artistic talent of Passaic County. Her piece was one of only four out of seventy pieces submitted in the entire county. Anna Marie Rodriguez's photo was also chosen to be featured in the state's digital exhibition, where it will be showcased for a year. Congratulations to these extraordinary artists and good luck to them as they represent Wayne Valley art and photography. Wayne Valley peer leaders hosted visiting student ambassadors from Palmston Lakes on April 26th. The peer leaders offered our visitors breakfast as they showcased what a day at Wayne Valley looks like. The experience brought the students and our two schools together, helping to create a more connected community. Mrs. Valenta and the Child Development Program recently entered the National Popcorn Pep Club Contest, in which contestants must demonstrate their school spirit while using popcorn in a preschool lesson. Their entry, which was a functional movie theater play area, complete with a ticket booth and a concession stand, won a $500 prize in the competition. Congratulations to the Child Development Program. Wayne Valley celebrated Teacher and Nurse Appreciation Week with a week full of activities for our amazing staff. Each day, a new activity was set up by a different club or organization in the school, and sweet treats, some even made by our own culinary students, were delivered to our amazing staff. Throughout the week, staff had the opportunity to also win first, second, and third-place prizes in a scavenger hunt to find pictures of Wayne Valley's favorite dog, Molly and Perator, hidden around the school. Congratulations to the Wayne Valley Competition Robotics Team, who won third place overall at the PCCC North Jersey Robotic Competition. The robotics student also won second place in the obstacle course competition and third place for technical presentation. Congratulations to these accomplished students. Out of every flag football team in North Jersey, twenty-eight girls were chosen to represent our half of the state in the Flag Football All-Star Game at MetLife Stadium. Three of those girls are our very own Abigail Russo, Gianna Marie Greenaw, and Sarah Paul. Good luck to these exceptional athletes as they prepare for this highly anticipated game. The Wayne Valley softball team and boys lacrosse team both have advanced to the county finals, and the baseball team has also made it to the county semifinals. Good luck to our Valley athletes. The Passaic County Chapter of the National Football Foundation Hall of Fame recently honored Wayne Valley's own David Jozdjak. Congratulations to Coach Jozdjak for this exciting moment in his career, thank you.
At the New Jersey Science League Competition, Wayne Hills had nine teams compete over the course of four months in many science areas. Five of our teams ranked in the top ten schools in the state out of several hundred participating schools. AP Physics II ranked number one, AP Biology ranked number five, Chemistry ranked number six, AP Physics I ranked number seven, and AP Physics C ranked number eight. The Wayne Hills 2024 Winter Guard in their show "Rune of Ahala" capped an incredibly successful season with a great performance at the Maine Championships on Saturday, April 20th. The Guard earned the Maine Bronze Medal, placing third out of thirteen Guards. The Wayne Hills 2024 Winter Percussion and Winter Guard wrapped up very successful seasons this weekend. Wayne Hills Interpercussion performed at the William Patterson Percussion Festival on April 19th, joining other school groups and professional musicians. During the week of April 22nd, Wayne Hills High School marked the 26th Annual Environmental Awareness Week in recognition of the anniversary of Earth Day. Teachers were invited to plan lessons during this special week that integrate an environmental theme to promote a greater awareness and sensitivity about local and global ecological issues that endanger our planet's resources and our human family. Moreover, teachers in the Science Department offered students the opportunity to participate in an environmental poster contest, from which winners were selected by faculty vote. Many thanks are extended to all in our local and school community who participated and supported this effort to raise environmental awareness. Thank you to Dr. Defina for organizing this event every year. For the second year, the Wayne Hills Science National Honor Society will proudly host a science fair for the elementary and middle school students in the district. Students will be able to make their own lava lamp, create static with balloons, and watch a catapult in action. They will have many child-friendly experiments for everyone. There will also be a 50/50 raffle, bake sale, and prizes. This free science fair will be on May 22nd in the Wayne Hills Front Commons from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM. Wayne Hills High School hosted the 16th Annual Student Culinary Competition this year. There were over three hundred people in attendance to taste the students' dishes from their theme stations. The entrance admission money raised $1,976 for the Culinary and Consumer Science Scholarships at both Wayne Hills and Maine Valley High Schools. Thank you to everyone who participated, attended, entered, and supported the student chefs in this competition. A special thank you to Sedexo as well for their support. The Wayne Hills Robotics Team competed for the second year in a row at the North Jersey Robotics Competition. Teams were tasked with creating a science and technology presentation to present to five judges. Over the past two and a half months, the robotics team worked hard on their competition. Robot by creating a drawing arm for the drawing challenge and a complex sorting mechanism for the oil spill challenge. On the day of the competition, Wayne Hills did not disappoint. They crushed the oil spill challenge by getting first place. They got third place in the drawing challenge with a near-perfect score. In the obstacle course, they finished fifth place. Wayne Hills also impressed the judges of the science and technology presentation with unique brochures, a visually appealing slideshow, and a CAD model, and won first place in the presentation because they went above and beyond with every aspect of the presentation. Wayne Hills also won the School Spirit Award. The team did a fantastic job at the 20th Annual North Jersey Robotics Competition and placed in second place overall, missing first by only a few points. Congratulations. Wayne Hills Athletics this spring has had great success. Boys Golf won the Passaic County Championship title, the league championship, and the Big North Tournament Championship, with Jimmy Veal taking home the individual county championship. Boys Tennis won the Passaic County Championship and the Big North Independence League. Cheyenne Chitawala took first in singles, Erin Martin took second singles, and second doubles was won by Brendan Carroll and Eric Wallach. Baseball won the Big North Independence League for the second year in a row. Boys Lacrosse saw Peter Carr record his 200th save, and Dean Mulkey became the third Hills player to score 100 goals. Our Girls Track and Field won the Big North Independence Division with many first-place finishes, including Kara Langbaum in the 1600 meter and the 800 meter runs, Alyssa Chan in the 100 meter dash, Mackenzie Moore in the 100 hurdles and the long jump, and Elizabeth Dankwell winning the shot put in the discus, breaking school records in both. Congratulations to all our scholar athletes, and thank you for your time.
Donations, please.
Our first donation is from May 2nd, 2024, to Anthony Wayne Middle School from the Anthony Wayne PTO to be used towards buses for the eighth grade lake day, in the amount of $500.
And also on May 2nd, from Ryerson Elementary School, there is a donation from Ryerson PTO, and the donation will be used towards third-grade field trips in the amount of $123. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Ava, on behalf of the board, want to thank you for your time that you've spent with us. We've kept you here late a few nights, not many, but we wish you all the best as you move on to college, and I can tell you, you're going to two of the best schools and that are deep in my heart. Congratulations and best of luck. Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda, please.
We have a few tonight. Under T Emergent Human Resources, we'll be adding, again on the action, it's Approval of Resignations and Retirements, we're adding number seven. Catherine King, Secretary, Facilities, full-time equivalent of one. UPC number is 06-59-44/BKU. Count number 1100262-100-01006. May 16th, 2024 resignation date. The salary is 25, uh, I'm sorry, $52,295 at step nine of the OP4 Salary Guide. Under V Emergent School Resource Finance, we're going to revise and add some language to number three, which is Approval of Contract Award. Exterior Building Improvement at Preakness Early Childhood Center, and that reads, I'll reread it and tell, uh, show, um, the revision highlight. It's Resolve that the Board of Education, as recommended by the district's Architect of Record, awards a contract with Smack Corp. from Saddle Brook, New Jersey, in a total amount of $3 million, which is the revision. for exterior building improvement at Preakness Early Childhood Center. Award is subject to a negotiation execution of a contract with Smack Corp. The Board President and Business Administrator are authorized to execute all appropriate documentation as appropriate. After further review, and this is what we're gonna add after further review by the district architect, it was determined to include the bid alternates for additional window systems and features. So we'll add the following language to the subject resolution, that reads, and it's an addition, total contract amount in, uh, for $3,147,920 includes a base bid of a $2,693,000 base bid, again with an alternate number one, uh, which is also part of the award, which is in the amount of $437,420, as well as alternate number two, which is in the amount of $17,500. Moving on, we'll be removing V4, which is Approval of Contract for partial replacements at various schools, which included TD, APT, and Ryerson, as the district did not receive bids. And moving on to X Emergent School Resource Legal. Number one, Approval of, and these are new to the agenda, we're adding them tonight, is Approval of Memorandum of Agreement, with, uh, and that is going to be read as follows. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Wayne Township Board of Education approves and ratifies the Memorandum of Agreement dated May 8, 2024, for successor agreement between the Teamsters Local 11 Dispatcher's Unit and the Wayne Township Board of Education dated July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027, and authorizes the President of the Board of Education execute the new collective negotiations agreement reflecting this Memorandum of Agreement as discussed in executive session. Approval of Sidebar Agreement, that reads as follows. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Wayne Township Board of Education approves and ratifies the Sidebar Agreement dated May 15, 2024 regarding changes to the Vacation Contracture Language and calculations with the Wayne Township Administrators Association. The Board President and Board Secretary are authorized to execute appropriate documentation to implement the same as attached by reference. And that concludes the changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open to the public on Agenda Item At this time, we'll open to the public on agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under old business. Do I have a mover? Move. Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Wintec.
Hi, greetings, Wayne Board of Education. I'm Winnie Kivitt, fifty-seven Park Lane, Wayne, New Jersey.
Mary Hennessy, sixty-two Maplewood Ave.
I'm the President of the Wayne Special Ed Parent Advisory Group at Mary Is.
I'm the President of Wayne Special Parents Association through the schools.
And we just wanted to make a public comment and thank the Board of Education wholeheartedly for supporting the Unified Sports Program. I believe we are the only school in the state of New Jersey that offers unified sports to kids K to twelve, and I heard pre-K may start next year, so we're so excited and we're very grateful. And we have seen several of you at our meetings, and we're just extending you an open invitation. Our next meeting is June eleventh, and sometimes we have surprise guests. Dr. Tobak has been to several of our meetings and also Mr. Pavlik. So you do support special education children. It's heartwarming to us, and we really appreciate it. Now I'm going to do a shameless plug. Well, I have a microphone in front of me, but we are so excited about Unified Sports. You saw the faces of those children that came up here, and they get to play basketball and esports, and, you know, they're so excited to be included in everything. And one of our fundraisers that helps support the Unified Sports is the Turkey Trot. We had it last year for the first time. We put it together under very short notice. Some teacher, Ryan, I can't remember his last name right now, but he helped organize it all, and we are going to do it again next year, and we're inviting all the Board of Education members to, it's a five K, you don't have to run, you can walk, but it's a great opportunity. The special ed children are all there, and it's a really great event for the township of Wayne.
Thank you, and just thank you for all your support, and we would love to see you at the Turkey Trot. End our meeting on June eleventh.
Okay, thank you.
Ladies, I think we can get, I think we can get you a lot of publicity. Yeah, I agree. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on an agenda item?
Seeing no one, move to close.
Mister Faver, Mrs. Lamandry. Retirements, I'll start down to my right.
Okey-dokey, good evening. I am going to speak about Kathy Arts. Ms. Kathy Arts, our beloved Tunis-Dye speech and language pathologist of seven years, who will be retiring at the end of September twenty twenty-four. Ms. Arts came to Tunis after working with Wayne preschoolers for over a decade. She has been an integral member of our district's related services team for nearly two decades. While Tunis cannot imagine her in any other capacity than speech and language pathology, Ms. Arts' professional path began in retail. Upon graduating from Pennsylvania State University with a degree in business, she held various retail positions until becoming a senior buyer for Brooks Brothers. Soon after she married her husband Dave, she decided to change career paths and earned her master's degree in communication disorders. At age thirty-six, Ms. Arts began her career as a speech and language pathologist. Prior to arriving in Wayne, she worked in Belleville, Garfield, and Upper Saddle River school districts, even working briefly for the New Jersey Department of Education. This career change was inspired by her experiences as a stutterer, and she hoped it will help others like her. She most certainly fulfilled that wish, as countless Wayne students have benefited from her knowledge, her skill, kindness, and support. As she moves into the next phase of her life, she hopes to work in some capacity with Autism Speaks. She will also be spending time with Dave, their daughter Molly. The entire Tunis-Dye school community wishes Ms. Arts so much love, relaxation, and happiness in her retirement.
Okay, I am going to speak about Janet Johnson, a beautiful soul and friend of mine. Ms. Johnson, until recently, was a lifelong resident of Wayne. She attended James Fallon Elementary School, the old Anthony Wayne Junior High when it was on Valley Road, and graduated from Wayne Valley in nineteen seventy-six. She then went on to attend Morristown School of Practical Nursing, graduating from there in nineteen seventy-eight. After graduation, she went to work at Chilton Hospital in Pompton Plains. She worked there for twenty-eight years, first in the medical surgical floor, then in maternity, taking care of the new moms and babies for many, many years. During her time at Chilton, she married her husband Ryer. They have been married for forty-four years and have four sons, Ryer Junior, Keith, Matthew, and Stephen, all who attended and graduated from Wayne Hills. After deciding to leave Chilton Hospital, she saw a Help Wanted ad in the Wayne Today newspaper. The Wayne Board of Education was looking for an LPN for their special needs students. This meant no more night shifts, weekends, or holidays to work. She applied, interviewed, and got the job. Having no experience with special needs students was certainly a learning curve for Ms. Johnson, and not quite the simple transition she had imagined, but over time and with the support of her coworkers, she began to love the job as well, to appreciate the struggles of the students. Now, eighteen years later, she enjoyed many new students, many new schools, and many wonderful experiences. There have been so many great memories. Now it's time for Ms. Johnson to retire and relax in her and her family's new home in the quiet town of Blairstown. Congratulations, Ms. Janet Jackson.
Retirement blurb for Asunta Stigliano. Asunta Stigliano, better known as Ms. Carmella, has been an integral part of our aftercare program for twenty-two years. It is a joyous occasion to honor her dedicated service and poignant movement as we bid farewell to cherished Randall Carter Extended Day sight lead. Ms. Carmella has exemplified unwavering dedication, compassion, and professionalism throughout her tenure. Beyond her professional contributions, she also has been source of warmth, kindness, and friendship. As we reflect on the past twenty-two years, we are reminded of the countless children's lives touched and profound impact made by Ms. Carmella. Asunta, thank you for everything you have done for our aftercare program, children, and community. Your dedication and compassion will be remembered. We hope your retirement brings joy, fulfillment, and endless adventures with your husband, children, and grandchildren. Enjoy some time with your feet up by a tropical island. Thank you for twenty-two years of dedicated service, and congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
I have the retirement statement for Ms. Christina Lechner. I just wanted to let you know, this was written by her supervisor in the first person, so when I say things like "I," it's not me, it's her supervisor, but I think you'll understand the passion and her impact just from a person who was asked to say some nice things about her. As I sit down to write this letter, I'm feeling so many mixed emotions. As we tell our students, everything is temporary, so enjoy things that you have. I must take that approach as we celebrate Mrs. Lechner's retirement. While we are thrilled for her and her family and the adventures that await, it's impossible not to feel a thought of bidding farewell to such an exceptional educator and friend. Ms. Lechner's journey as a teacher has been nothing short of amazing. Throughout the years, she has worked at both the elementary level as well as George Washington Middle School. This is where she was for the past twelve years, and I've had the privilege of serving as her administrator. During this time, I was able to witness firsthand the dedication to her profession, unwavering passion for teaching, and genuine care for every student. Lastly, but equally important, was the leadership she demonstrated. As a teacher, leadership happens in a variety of ways, and for Mrs. Lechner, it was always doing the right thing, not the easy thing. Previously, I mentioned everything is temporary. Whilst, yes, educators retire and are no longer in the school, the standard of professionalism and the caring set by Mrs. Lechner will continue to be modeled even though she will be gone for the next school year. Reflecting on her career, Mrs. Lechner instilled knowledge in her students and a love for learning that transcends far beyond the classroom. She has been a mentor and a source of inspiration to students and staff. Beyond her role as a teacher, she has been a pillar of support for students, staff, and administration. Her positive influence is extended far beyond the walls of our school, shaped the educational landscape of our community. As Mrs. Lechner begins the new chapter of her life, I hope she finds joy in the memories created at GW and feels a sense of pride in all of her accomplishments, also keep the excitement for the adventures that lie ahead. Vacations and African safaris, there's not much time to rest. Retirement may mark the end of one chapter, but is also the beginning of a new and exciting journey. We will miss your presence in the hallways and classrooms. Your spirit will forever remain at GW. I hope you know that, know what a privilege it's been working with you. Thank you for all you have done for us at GW. We will miss you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mister Paul.
Gavin Bannet. As a physical education teacher, driver education teacher, and wrestling coach, Gavin Bannet has been more than an educator. He's been a mentor, a guide, a source of inspiration for generations of students. For the past twenty-eight years, Coach Bannet has walked the halls of Wayne Valley, leaving an indelible mark on the lives he's touched. Countless former students and wrestlers have come back to see Coach Bannet and let him know the impact he has had on their lives. As a physical education instructor, Mr. Bannet has embodied the values of health, fitness, and striving for best personal performance. His classes were not just about exercise, they were about instilling lifelong habits of wellness and resilience. Behind the wheel, as our driver's ed education teacher, Mr. Bannet was more than an instructor. He was a guardian of safety and responsibility. Through patient instruction and guidance, he equipped countless students with the skills and knowledge necessary for safe driving practices. Using life experiences, Mr. Bannet imparted lessons on accountability, mindfulness, and respect for the rules of the road. In the wrestling arena, Coach Bannet's unwavering passion and commitment for wrestling has led to many successful seasons. As the head wrestling coach, Coach Bannet instilled life lessons with his wrestlers and built champions of character. They were taught lessons of resilience, teamwork, and perseverance, and they became leaders both on and off the mat. Under Coach Bannet's leadership, no one was more prepared or in better physical condition than our Wayne Valley wrestlers. As Mr. Bannet embarks on a new chapter in his life, let us not bid farewell, but rather celebrate a career defined by passion, dedication, and reliance. Beyond the accolades and victories, Mr. Bannet has been more than just a teacher. He's been a mentor, a confidant, and a source of unwavering support for his students and wrestlers. Here's to retirement well deserved and time to enjoy life to its fullest. I also had Mr. Bannet in his first years of teaching, and all of this is very true.
Thank you. Mister Bannet.
So I have two. I'm going to start with Brian, with Bruce McNutt, sorry. Mr. Bruce McNutt was retiring from Wayne Hills this year after serving the district for thirty-one years. Prior to teaching at Wayne Hills, he spent one year in a rural Pennsylvania middle high school, Sullivan County High School. Mr. McNutt's first year in Wayne was the nineteen ninety-three, nineteen ninety-four school year, where he was hired to teach calculus. The irony is that Mr. McNutt has taught math in nearly every course offered at Wayne Hills, but has never taught calculus. He was the first, he was the first teacher of AP Statistics, teaching that for ten years. Half a dozen years ago, the computer science classes were growing, and Mr. McNutt volunteered to teaching computer science, web development, and AP Computer Science Principles. Most years, he stepped up to help the school by teaching a sixth or even seventh period class when needed. Mr. McNutt coached basketball, baseball, skiing, and golf, and as head coach of golf, he won three Passaic County Championships. He led a basketball to a near upset in the Passaic County Finals by defeating the number one seed as a number sixteen seed. Mr. McNutt served his fellow teachers as a liaison committee member for many years, as well as building representative, as well as building representative, working always to foster a positive relationship between the administration and the faculty. Mr. McNutt's forthrightness, coupled with his sense of humor, was always welcomed, especially during difficult or tense situations. He always focused on creating a positive environment with his colleagues by advising on four oh three B, saving or designing fun math slogans like "Got Math" or "Do the Math." He intends to spend his retirement enjoying cabinetry, golfing, small engine repair, walks in the woods with his wife and dog, playing guitar, taking college courses, volunteer work, and finally, taking naps. I also have Diane Ippicino. After you've worked alongside someone for twelve years, letters like this are hard to write, and it is with mixed emotions I write this letter congratulating Mrs. Diane Ippicino on her retirement from the position of Special Education Aid at George Washington Middle School. It has been an incredible journey working alongside such a talented and caring educator. Throughout her time at GW, Ms. Ippicino has been, has played such a large role in remarkable growth and progress of her students. I am delighted and deeply grateful for the opportunity to have been part of this educational journey. As I reflect on her years in this role, I am filled with gratitude and the countless memories we have all shared with Ms. Ippicino. Each day brought new challenges, triumphs, and moments of genuine connection, and in this, she made sure her students had unwavering support. We're excited to see her embrace this new chapter in her life and explore new opportunities. However, we will miss our daily interactions and the difference she made at GW each and every day. For everyone, from everyone at GW, we want to express our heartfelt thanks for her friendship, support, dedication to our students with special needs. Mrs. Ippicino's passion, professionalism, and commitment will be missed every day. Although she is saying goodbye, we hope she stays connected to GW and shares all of the stories of her amazing family and the time she will be able to spend with them. Thank you once again for your commitment to GW and our students. We wish you all continued success, and we will miss you.
Julia Kelly. Julia Kelly will be retiring from Wayne Township Public Schools as a beloved school nurse at the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Mrs. Kelly first joined the district in twenty-eleven as a Wayne Hills High School nurse and transferred to Tunis-Dye Elementary School in twenty sixteen. Additionally, she has served as the school nurse for our Extended School Year Program for several summers. Mrs. Kelly has supported the health and well-being of thousands of students during her tenure in Wayne, always offering a smile and a laugh with every Band-Aid and ice pack. Mrs. Kelly received her bachelor's degree from Saint Mary's College in South Bend, Indiana. She began her nursing career working shifts at various local hospitals and nursing homes, finally settling in the Labor and Delivery Department at Englewood Hospital. She frequently worked nights so that she could be with her young children during the day. All of these early nursing experiences informed her work with students as she transitioned into the school, into the role of school nurse. She earned her school nurse certification from Colwell University and began substituting as a nurse in Bogota Public Schools, followed by serving the students of Prospect Park for six years. At Tunis, Mrs. Kelly is beloved, not just for her nursing skills and knowledge, but also for her kindness, care, and amazing sense of humor. She recognizes that nursing is a holistic endeavor, and everything that she does at school embodies this. Upon retirement, she will focus her nurturing and care upon her husband Ambrose, her children Joe, Mike, Maureen, and Megan, and her grandchildren, Ryan, Michael, and Adeline. The entire Tunis-Dye family will greatly miss Mrs. Kelly, but we are so happy for her to move into this next chapter of love, relaxation, and family.
I have the honor of reading the retirement of Mr. David Drejoc, Drauz, as he's affectionately known in the district. Dave prepares to retire. It is with deep gratitude that we reflect on his incredible contributions to education and athletics over the span of four decades. With over forty years of dedicated service, Dave's impact has resonated far beyond the classroom, leaving an everlasting mark on the lives of countless students, colleagues, and community members. Drauz's journey in education began as a physical education teacher at Passaic Valley High School. After four years, he moved on to West Essex, where he spent twenty-nine years. His tenure as a coach not only displayed his ability to lead teams to victory, but also instilled invaluable life lessons of teamwork, resilience, determination in generations of young athletes. Through his guidance and mentorship, he not only cultivated champions on the field, but also nurtured individuals of character off the field. Eight years ago, Drauz assumed the role of Athletic Director at Wayne Valley High School, a position where his leadership, vision, and on- a position where his leadership, vision, and unwavering dedication to excellence has elevated our school's athletic program to new heights. During his tenure, our athletic programs at Wayne Valley have earned over 50 conference titles, more than 30 county titles, and six state championships. Dave's profound impact is felt not only in the realm of sports, but in fostering a culture of inclusivity, sportsmanship, integrity, that extends throughout our entire school district. Two years ago, Dave's leadership expanded to encompass the entire district, as he assumed the role of Athletic Director for both our district high schools. His deep roots in Wayne, having grown up in our community and graduating from Wayne Valley High School himself, provided him with a unique perspective and an unwavering commitment to the success and well-being of every student athlete. As we bid farewell to Drauz, we express our heartfelt gratitude to his dedicated, to the dedicated service and passion and leadership he has provided to the district. His legacy will endure as a testament of the power of education and the profound influence of individuals' dedication to shaping the lives of others. After dedicating so much of his life to others, we return him to his family and wish him a joyous and long retirement. I've known Dave well, long, over 60 years. Dave and I were in middle school and high school together, and what a great person, and what a great human being he is, and we, we will miss him greatly. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, I extend our heartfelt gratitude for the years of dedicated service to all our retirees. Their commitment to education and well-being of our students has and will leave a lasting impact. We wish you all the best in a well-deserved retirement. We have some committees that met?
Yes, I'll start off with transportation and facilities. Just a couple things on there. If I flub on it, Mr. Moffett just, you know, jump in there and I'll make a correction here, but I'll do my best to slog through these. We, we met both on April 18th and on tonight. Mr. Battershill, Mr. Pavlek, Mrs. Tibbits, Mr. Romaine, Mr. Skabitski, and of course, Mr. Moffett were attending the meetings. On the area of facilities, just to move through them, because they're in the process right now, and those things take over, were done overnight. We're, we're working over potential agenda items. We went over and approved the meetings minutes from the 18th. We looked closely at policy and regulation 7510, the use of facilities departments. We're going to be taking a very, very close look at that, based upon reports you're getting back from facilities and transportation about that. We're looking into a couple of different grants, the COPS, the CVPP, and Grants for Pre-K with the tightening of the budgets. We're looking for any place we can get funding, and that's one of the things we're looking at, is try to beat the bushes and throw over the rocks and looking for more money to take care of some of the shortfalls that are coming. Under operations, we looked at security assessments, we had, we looked at our district solar agreement, and we're looking for a new integration position. I was announced tonight that the, one of the people in the department has resigned, so we'll be looking into, looking into that. It's a very, very involved job with a lot of different qualifications, so it's not something we could just pull out of our hat, so we'll be looking closely at that. Under projects, we just talked in the meeting about the Preakness Building Skin Roof Window Replacement Projects, that was placed in the emergence. The James Fallon restroom is going to be worked on, as well as the data center, the generator. The big one here was the rod grant applications for AP Terhune, for Tunis Day, and for Ryerson. We did not get bids back. President Pavak wanted to know what was going on, I, we can shed a little light on that. Because there is solar panels on top of the roof, we have to get a second, a first company to come get them off of the roof, and then the clock would have to start for the construction on the roofs, and if they don't have enough time, they can be penalized for not getting them done in time. So a lot of people don't want to submit because they don't have to worry about that wild card of getting the solar panels off in time to get it started, to get the entire process going, so it doesn't make it the most attractive offer. Mr. Moffett and the rest of the facilities department are looking at breaking that job out into individual jobs, and hopefully that will attract it. At this point, a lot of these companies, summertime is the busy time for them, so they're looking for, honestly, they're looking for fast money. Now uncomplicated jobs, 1 through 6, here's the job, here's a check, thank you very much, anything that can have an additional wrinkle, like the solar panels, they kind of pause on that, so we're in a process with that one. We do have a bid out on the Wayne Hills High School chimney, that is out to bid right now, we're waiting on the results from that one. Over in Transportation Department, lots of good news. My hat's off to Mr. Skabitski, he's doing a great job over there. The Mercer County Co-op and South Bergen Joint Contract for 2425 are being worked on. We're looking at a drug testing contract renewal, that means the company that does our drug testing, we're looking into that also. I think the big one for me, I was very, very pleased to hear about this. The bus evacuation drills are completed, the state inspections are completed, they gave us a report back that 93% of our buses passed across the board for all of their inspections. So we've got a great group, and then he said unheard of, 100% of our buses pass exhaust and environmental discharge, which is absolutely unheard of, even the company that came out said, "We've never heard this ever happening before," that every single one of our 40-plus buses all pass that inspection, so a tip of the hat for the maintenance department. That's not an easy thing to do. We've all driven down the road and seen the other town's school buses going by, and it was like a big, great big smog machine rolling behind, and apparently Wayne doesn't do that, so a tip of the hat, and I want to acknowledge the great work of the maintenance department on that one. We're looking at the ESY routes, that's the summer and extended school year programs, they're scheduled for June 13th, and then the out of district, we're going to send those out to bid also for extended school year, and that's that.
Thank you. Mrs. Wintick?
I have a personnel committee to report. We met on May 13th at 4:00 PM. It was Ms. Rigoloso, Mr. Faber, Paula Clark, the Director of HR, and myself. We reviewed the April 18, 2024 Personnel Committee Minutes, and no changes were noted by the committee. We reviewed the May 16, 2024 Agenda over the HR items, and we didn't have any questions. Reviewed some job descriptions, Director of Technology, which was revised, Manager of Data Accountability in Communication, which was also revised, Supervisor of Educational Technology Integration, revised job description, Student Data Specialist, also revised, System Analyst/Programmer Specialist, revised job description, Benefits Manager, revised job description, Accounts Payable Manager, revised job description, excuse me, Administrative Assistant to the Business Administrator Board Secretary, that was a new job description, and Early Childhood Education Principal, also a new job description. Once they are finalized, they will be posted on our district website. Let's see. Yes, and that was, that will conclude my report of the personnel committee. Thank you.
Mrs. Rigoloso? Nothing good? Mr. Prasakos?
I have two committees to read in tonight. On April 30th, the Finance Committee met virtually at 5:04 PM. I was joined by Mrs. Wintink, Mr. Faber, and Mr. Pavlek joined us at 5:30. I was also joined by Administrators, Mr. Moffett, who joined at 5:08, and Mrs. Leitig. We reviewed the April 4th, 2023 Meeting Minutes, and they were reviewed and approved. We went through the agenda items from the prior meeting. Mr. Moffett and Ms. Leitig reviewed agenda items and answered committee questions, including financial reports for March 2024, contracts for the 2024-2025 fiscal year, emergent checks for the May 2nd, 2024 meeting, and emergent contract for 2023-2024. We discussed potential future actions with Mr. Moffett and Ms. Leitig, possible withdrawal from the Capital Reserve for the central office at 15 Ellis, the data center electrical upgrade, and the need to award a contract for the related electrical work, and additional, if needed, use of surplus in the 2023-2024 fiscal year, the need to move forward with rod projects that were not grant-approved by the New Jersey Department of Education. Also, we received an update on the Food Service Management Request for Proposals. The Selection Committee is actually bringing this to the Board tonight. Annual Solicitation and Professional Service Appointments for Business Services and Student Services, appropriation of 2022-2023 Non-Public Transportation Aid. In the Business Office, Ms. Leitig provided a staff update and status update regarding the extraordinary aid application, and we had a 2024-2025 District Budget Update. Mr. Moffett and Ms. Leitig discussed and answered questions related to potential reductions for savings, list of the budget questions from the trustees, the budget timeline, the process, and county review and approval, and there was also a question on SDA reimbursements, and Ms. Leitig reviewed the SDA reimbursement process with the committee. And that was the Finance Committee, that ended at 5:49 PM on April 30th. And the Communications Committee Minutes, the Communications Committee met on Tuesday, May 7th, in person. I was in the meeting with Mrs. Lamandry, Mr. Paul, and Dr. Toback. We reviewed the social media engagement, and we reviewed many statistics associated with the social media account, and saw that the district experienced a large increase in followers, primarily due to the referendum. The committee also reviewed Let's Talk Dialogues, and the Superintendent agreed to provide the committee with a follow-up email over two issues. The committee also discussed the response to the technology problem that led to the cancellation of the SAT testing at Wayne Valley High School in May, and the committee also discussed new ways to recognize and celebrate teachers.
Thank you. Let's move on to the agenda. Do I have a mover for the agenda?
Yes, I can move the entire agenda in total, please.
Mr. Giordano? Mr. Paul? Any discussion on the agenda? See, none? Roll call.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes, I'm just going to abstain on V2.
V2?
Yes.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamandry?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
I need to abstain on V2 due to a professional conflict, and yes, there is.
And Mr. Pavlek?
Yes, and I'll abstain on X2.
Motion carries.
At this time, we will open the meeting to the public. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be made or responded to tonight or at another meeting under Old Business. Do I have a mover? Move. Mr. Giordano? Mrs. Rigoloso? Anyone from the public wishing to speak on an agenda, on any item?
Board of Education Administrators, my name is Michael Schmidt. I'm the Food Service Director for Wayne Public Schools and Senior General Manager. I wanted to take the moment to thank my, you've heard the 17 past years of working here in this district. Been a great program, great experience. I really have to thank my team there, I just, through everything we've been through together to this point, you're a great group. Make sure you take care of them. That's really all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gabriel Nasiola. I live at 1260 Razzo Road in Wayne. I'm here to once again try to address the issue of the bond referendum. What comes to mind is the old adage of haste makes waste, except to the contrary, I think it's a responsibility of this Board and this administration to make some haste to try to prepare a new bond referendum to be introduced at the November 5th presidential election. And the reason that I suggest that is, if one understands the concept of the law of large numbers, when you confine a issue to a very limited election, calling for approval or disapproval of a bond referendum, particularly one that's in excess of $169 million, respectfully, I would address that and say that the Board of Education and the administration bid off more than the citizen taxpayers of Wayne were willing to chew. My suggestion is you prepare a new bond referendum, perhaps under that concept, and why it was turned down from 5,000 votes to 3,000 something votes, was because you chose to limit the number of voters that could vote on it. When putting it out along with the November 5th presidential election, you probably have five times the number of voters exposed to vote on a referendum. I think too, as a citizen viewing that and hearing that there were 62 separate items incorporated in it, the great majority of which seemed to me to be maintenance items that could have, should have, would have been done by our management staff under Capital Reserve, that didn't make it very popular. So I think if you tried to limit the volume of that bond referendum, not to the 100 million that the mayor has suggested, but be able to say to the citizens, "We heard you, we've cut this desired referendum in half," and make a presentation, obviously with the primary issue being the building of a new elementary school. I guess that's not the pre-ness there, because we know we're going to need that, we have apartment buildings going up all over the town, and that's an absolute necessity. I think it was a mistake to use an assessed value average of $229,473, because what you did is you misled perhaps thousands of condominium owners in the town who would not be paying $370 a year for 25 years, because there's not a condominium in the town that would have an assessed value of $229,473. You would have gained perhaps a large number of those condominium owners, because they wouldn't have to bite off more than they could chew. Likewise, we have an abundance of apartment units in the town, and there could be a way, when the assessed values of those buildings are concerned, to break it down to what it might cost a single apartment owner in terms of their contribution toward the tax bill of the owner. I don't know what else to say, except that I volunteered to Mr. Moffett, because I believe at the last meeting I heard, it mentioned that a Citizens Committee was constructed or would be constructed to address the issue. I volunteered to participate in it, because I think I have some basic sales ideas. After 40 years of selling auto, life, and fire insurance, I think I might help the presentation. So I'm just a taxpayer. What was presented didn't seem to make sense to me, and so I offered my help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Seeing no one else, I move to close.
Mr. Giordano? Mr. Faber? At this time, we're going to go into, we, the Board needs to go back into executive session over a legal matter. We'll probably be anywhere from 30 to 40 minutes. Action may be taken upon coming back. So do I have a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano? Mrs. Rigoloso?